Just a little introduction because we have a stranger at our table. We have Sergio, what's your last name Sergio?
Uglia.
Welcome to the meeting.
Sergio.
Where's your brother?
Did you spell that for me?
Is that coming?
Is that coming? Give a hand Sergio.
Yes.
Thank you Sergio. Thank you.
Okay. The meeting is under order, roll call please.
Jerry Harrow.
Here.
Linda Decker. Francis Mesrino, President. Gloria Gershka. I'm so sorry, Joseph Fredericks. Paul Dobrik. Anna Rosensen. Scott Samuel Sampson. Stuart Wolf Sampson. We have a form to conduct this business.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting and Francis has made me aware that they were not put in our packet, so we're not able to approve them. So we're going to have to just pass by the minutes and handle that.
We do have the minutes of the budget meeting though, please.
Okay. Fine. So I want to rule two minutes of the budget meeting.
Drop something on the other side, the other side.
We have the minutes of the budget meeting of December 2nd.
It's an umbrella.
Are there any objections or exceptions to those minutes? And may I have a motion that they be accepted and approved as today's president?
I make a motion that the minutes of the budget meeting on, what's the date Francis?
December 2nd.
December 2nd be accepted. But we wait the reading of the minutes and accept the assets.
Can I pull up water if you can now?
Any objections to that?
Any objections to motion?
There's no reason why you can't be put in time for our information.
No, there's no reason that we can't, but we're voting to wait them, but we'll be happy to give you a copy of them, okay?
You can get them at the office once they've been approved, you can always get them at the end of the day.
Yeah, okay. It's really for expedition, okay? We're trying to move things along, okay? Although that wasn't really a biggie. All right, the next item on the agenda, oh, we have a special, a special item, it's not on the agenda, you want to present it Francis please?
I don't have it.
Yes, I'm making a motion to add an item to the agenda.
I didn't even see it.
To discuss, to discuss the status of Mr. Paul Picas's position as a member of the board of directors.
My second motion. We need to explain this situation.
Are there any objections?
Any objections?
Are there any objections to putting that matter on the agenda?
No.
Okay, what has happened is that, I'm sorry. What has happened is that for Bittin Burdens, because of the long illness and death of his wife, Mr. Picas missed a number of board meetings and our rules provide that if four meetings are missed, the member has effectively resigned from the board. We would like to rectify this, Mr. Picas has been a very valued member of the board and I think that to terminate his position on the board could be an injustice of the circumstances. And having said that, I wish to nominate Paul Picas to continue to fill the, his remaining term as he would have on the Board of Directors. I nominate, we have to vote. He has been nominated to fill the vacancy created by his inappropriate action.
That means that he should go to work in December?
No.
No, no, no. The transition is on.
He's filling his term, he's filling his term.
He's going to continue as before.
Right, we're just technically correcting a situation that has been brought to our attention, okay? That's it.
And the.
It shouldn't have been brought to the attention.
Shouldn't have been brought, it had to be brought.
Yes, but once, once it was noticed it had to be brought to the attention of the board, there was no question. All right, so Mr. Picas has been nominated to continue to fill out the rest of the term of his office. Are there any other nominations? I'm with the nominations be closed and Mr. Picas is on the board by applause.
Are you planning to hear that poll or are you, very good. All right, let us move on. The President's report, that's me. Welcome to the last board meeting of the year. Excuse me, sir, would you mind, we're trying to, we need a little quiet here, I have a very soft voice. Welcome to the last board meeting of the year, I'd like to begin by thanking the board members whose three-year term expires at the end of this month. Gloria Gershka, Joe Fredericks, and Clive Bates. I understand that, okay? At one point each of them occupied this chair and I know from my short experience that it's not an easy assignment. I congratulate them for their efforts and willingness to serve. As most of you know, I replaced Mr. Bates who resigned in August. I already knew the history of the board as a constant focus of nasty rumor and controversy, therefore I was not disappointed or surprised by the constant flow of vitriol from certain board members who labeled me liar, stupid, uninformed, ignorant, and recently needing professional mental health. Fortunately, our reputations precede us, we must always consider the source of information before we decide on its value. My interest in getting involved in the political process is to bring some real change to the community, for too long incivility has hampered progress in getting things done. What did surprise me were the lack of will and organization of the board members who voted to put me in office. I thought with a cohesive majority, the board could move forward and accomplish good things for the community. I quickly saw it was a false hope. It seemed the main purpose for the majority was for me to become the whipping boy of the minority. They were not interested in my ideas or leadership, just someone to take pressure off of them. I was not able to bring up for discussion important topics like the Pecassus settlement or the questionable payments by the association to certain owners for damage to their condos. Even minor issues were denied support, taping meetings to maintain order, passing a motion to table to permit the full board to vote later, allowing owners to vote on a partial reserve. The majority had the votes to work with me, but they did not. I also did not feel I received timely information from KW, our property management company. I made them aware of bookkeeping problems even before I got on the board, but they have not been resolved yet. I asked them for information about how to reduce our large water bill and information regarding changing our cable relationship, I never received either. Lastly, two months ago, a notice was posted asking for committee volunteers, no one signed up. A few residents mentioned privately they might consider volunteering, but they would not put their names down. There appears to be a pervasive fear in the air that has accumulated over the years which needs to be addressed. Volunteers are the lifeblood of the community and IB is suffering due to a lack of participation. In two weeks, you can start a new trend by voting. Regardless of whom you vote for, if your ballot is returned, the board will know you are serious about what they are doing. "A house divided cannot stand," quote, "unless the board learns to support its leaders, it will be doomed to failure and dysfunction. We need to begin to work together to make positive changes happen. Best wishes for a happy, healthy holiday." Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the treasurer's report, that's me. Yes ma'am, I have ten of them right here, okay, there's one. If you can sign them, I always bring them twice, I want it to be a surprise. Look, they're right here, you can, what do you want, hit them all. Okay. Okay, here we are. This is the financial report. Bank balances as of October 31st, 2008. In the operating account, we have $34,600. In the special assessment number one account, we have $319,500. In the special assessment account number two, we have $401,600. The construction account, we have $10,500. The security deposit, Wachovia, $21,400. And the security deposit at City National, $84,800. Funds being held in the two security deposit accounts are being held in escrow and cannot be utilized by the association. Every effort will be made to identify and reimburse the owners. Delinquencies, there's a graphical representation of the present delinquencies of the maintenance fees, Wachovia and SBA loans attached. Pending liens, 54. Foreclosures placed on units through December 16th, 28 bank foreclosures and three association foreclosures. Bankruptcies, two. Settlements presently received by attorney in response to lien foreclosure action, 35. The above foreclosure/leans represent approximately 4% of the units within International Village. Administration, the annual 2009 budget has been approved by the Board of Directors without an increase in the maintenance fees. Owners will have an opportunity to vote on the reserves on December 30th and those ballots have gone out. Second notice of annual meeting, annual meeting for the meeting on December 30th has been mailed to owners, along with the ballots for the membership elect three, for the membership elect three new board members for 2009. Proxies for the waiving of the budget reserves and amendment changes. Candidates for the 2009 Board of Directors are, in alphabetical order, Daniel Coco, Terry Plough, Gerald Miro, Michael Schenkel, and Michelle Terzigny. Pecassus settlement checks in the amount of $940,000 and the release of Pecassus lien have been received. Attorney Roberts has filed to have the Gator lien dismissed. On behalf of KW and the board, we'd like to thank Christine Bates for decorating the village for the holidays. You've done a wonderful job and your husband's client, Clive, has been her assistant, wonderful job. Meetings, we met with Wachovia Bank representatives, Attorney Katzman, and the Board of Directors to review their loan proposal. Wachovia is to present various options to the board for repayment of the present loan and we just received that today, we haven't had an opportunity to review it. We met with the association attorney, Mr. Katzman, to discuss alternate loan financing. The board is waiting response from three other lenders. We attended manager's meeting, this is not me, I'm just reading it, this is for Howard. He attended the manager's meeting at KW Corporate Office to discuss various concerns over accounting and preventive maintenance plans. Maintenance and prevention, rodents have been reported in the Zurich building. Maintenance and terminics have inspected and treated the areas. Inspection of the garbage room was satisfactory and should not attract rodents. Handicap ramp to the Yorkshire front door, the work has been completed. Carpets in the hallways of old buildings will be professionally cleaned beginning Wednesday the 17th of December, tomorrow. Notices have been posted indicating, Anne you're not listening to me, Anne. Indicating which building is going to be done on the various days, they're on the doors. New parking bumper installation and painting continues. A new door has been installed at the guardhouse. Nova Engineering has inspected the clubhouse roof and will be presenting a report as to its condition. Recommendations, dispersal of settlement funds will be presented to the board for approval. A reserve study of the village should be done in 2009. This will determine our immediate and long-term financial needs. Management will approach the 2009 Board of Directors with request to restructure the present staffing arrangement. Respectfully submitted, Howard Carter, Manager.
Do you know what areas of the council you're going to be on to?
I don't know, I just read it, yes sir. Speak up.
Is there any mention there of Nova finalizing open permits?
The mention is that they've inspected the roof.
That's something sad.
And will be presenting a report as to its condition, there's nothing else up in it when I read it.
You didn't say anything about the open permits that weren't finalized?
It is not written here.
You just invited.
He's asking if there was any more information about Nova Engineering. We've mentioned the clubhouse roof and the report's going to be presented, but Nova was also working on permits for us to clear up the work that we had done earlier and Paul was really shepherd in that and he was interested in whether it was finalized and there's nothing in this report of Howard's that would indicate that it's finalized, so.
Is it, is it actually finalized?
Well, he's, yeah, okay, you'll be able to remember that or you gotta jot it down? Okay, all right, very good. All right, that's the reports. All right, the treasurer's report, manager's report, committee reports, sales and leases, Anne you're on.
Microphone, thank you. Mr. Walker?
Hello. See that, we knew you had a good view Sergio.
The sales and lease committee met on December 10th, 2008 and at that meeting, we approved one sale of two bedrooms for $58,000. We approved three leases, two efficiencies, one at 800 and one at 600, and one two-bedroom at 800. There were three rollovers, one bedroom went at 850, two bedrooms 1100, one studio 700. That was the result of the meeting on December 10th. I would like to clarify a misconception, that be that the sales and lease committee does not obey the law because we don't take minutes and because of our negligence, Mr. Samuel told me the other day, if he reports us and that he very well might, it would cost the residents of IB thousands. The report you just heard, our minutes, it tells you what transpired at our last meeting. The reading of these minutes are never waived and these minutes are given to the secretary who adds it to her minutes of the board meeting. If Mr. Samuels or anyone else ever wants to refer to our minutes, they have only to look up the minutes of that meeting. I hope this explanation will allay any fears Mr. Samuels has regards to the sales and lease committee. Thank you.
I have a question.
Anne, you were going to clarify an item that was in the sales and lease report at the last meeting, there was some question about the amount of the transaction.
In the lease it was $12,000 and the whole, it appeared to us that that was a high figure. Were you able to research that and find out if that number was correct or not?
No.
Would you mind doing that and reporting to Francis? I don't know, she can put it in the notes.
Yes, please look, please look that up, yes.
All right, that's fine, that's fine.
Now, in this report that you've given today, please Anne, does that include the shady occupancy permit where two gentlemen have both sent in letters saying that they're going to be living with the same woman in their apartment?
So I've denied the.
So that has been denied, thank you very much. Will we give you a copy of your report because I don't have it in my package?
I make a motion to approve the report the sales and lease committee has presented.
Discussion, okay, I have a little discussion. I had reference to the item that Francis brought up, I have a little trepidation in bringing it up, but I had, I had looked into that matter from all points of view and I found it to be a very interesting situation.
What are we talking about?
Yeah, I will tell you, I'm just getting started, all right? This is my way of starting.
Slow.
Yeah. I've never been accused of being slow. The situation is this, as I understood it, there was a registered owner to a property and the registered owner sent a letter to the board about a occupant that he wanted to have live at that property. And it turns out that that registered owner is, may be the registered owner, but he is not the occupant of that apartment. So then it was requested that the occupant of that apartment write a letter to address the sales and lease department saying that he would be living with this young lady, okay? Because of the request, because of the request of the association, two letters for the same property at different times appeared, okay? Because the impression I first got is somehow two letters came at the same time, which is a little confusing, but the second letter came at the request of the association, okay? Because that person actually lived there and the requirement of the bylaws is that an occupant, that an occupant can only live in a property, in a unit, if the owner resides there also. So we had a quandary, we had a quandary, the whole, the reason it was a quandary was a senior citizen and the senior citizen wasn't even paying, it was more or less what we referred to as a mitzvah and we decided to bring the senior citizen in. I'm going to try to abbreviate this because we have a lot to do and I almost am sorry I began, but I'm just throwing the information out there. We brought the lady in and we had two of the, the sales and lease committee members at the meeting with Howard, with our property manager and my understanding from Howard, from Howard directly was, and Anne was not one of those two, those two members agreed to let this lady because one of the, because one of those members knew the lady for many years. So that was a done deal, supposedly, but somehow that deal unraveled, okay? That's enough about that. The only reason I'm mentioning it is background, the reason we got into this is because I talked to the owner of the apartment, okay, I've talked to everybody that's involved. My understanding from the owner is that basically it was a sham transaction and the owner really wants to, because of his mother's desire, the owner wants to put this senior citizen into an empty apartment that he owns in another building, okay? And Gloria's getting ready, okay, I'll finish up. And because that's not something, because the lady has no income, she's a senior and she has no income, she wouldn't pass inspection for that apartment. And my answer, and that's why I'm bringing it up and I'm not expecting really a discussion about this because we have to check with our lawyer on it, I didn't understand and I explained to the owner, I don't understand why we can't have a cosigner that's representing this lady in the apartment because all the association is really interested in is a good tenant, okay, a good tenant that respects the rules and of course the income, you know, the maintenance income and the special assessment income. I know Gloria, you're ready, but I'm not, you can say anything you want, you're entitled, but I just am throwing this out because, because it was brought up, because it was brought up, I'm very empathetic to seniors or anyone that can't afford something and that can find a way around it where they can afford it that the association is comfortable with. I think we should entertain it so that this sham transaction that was, you know, shouldn't have been done, I agree 100% with Anne, Anne is 100% right and Francis is right too, but it's one of those things that happened because we weren't direct about it. I'm done, go ahead Gloria.
I think that what you should all know in the transaction that Jerry is talking about is correct. He's correct. Two people wrote in and said that she was going to be an occupant not paying rent. One of the owners, the actual owner of rent lives in New York, you cannot have an occupant if you're not in the apartment. The other owner, the other person who wrote the letter, I'm not going to mention names, is Doug Mars, who, who takes these apartments and all. The bottom line is, what they were doing, because I asked why does she have to have furniture, she's going in as an occupant, the bottom line is they were renting her the apartment in Alois. But what they were doing is not letting the board, the committee, anybody, they are doing these flim-flam things all over the village.
Right, Gloria's right, Gloria's right, and I think, I think there could be a
and the senior citizen wasn't even paying. It was more or less what we referred to as a mitzvah. And we decided to bring the senior citizen in. I'm going to try to abbreviate this because we have a lot to do. And I almost am sorry I began, but I'm just throwing the information out there. We brought the lady in, and we had two of the, the Sales and Lease Committee members at the meeting with Howard, with our property manager. And my understanding from Howard, from Howard directly, was, and Anne was not one of those two, those two members agreed to let this lady, because one of the, because one of those members knew the lady for many years. So that was a done deal, supposedly. But somehow that deal unraveled. Okay? That's enough about that. The only reason I'm mentioning it is background. The reason we got into this is because I talked to the owner of the apartment. Okay? I've talked to everybody that's involved. My understanding from the owner is that basically, it was a sham transaction. And the owner really wants to, because of his mother's desire, the owner wants to put this senior citizen into an empty apartment that he owns in another building. Okay? And Gloria's getting ready. Okay? The, I'll finish up. And, and because that's not something, because the lady has no income, she's a senior and she has no income, she wouldn't pass inspection for that apartment. And my answer, and that's why I'm bringing it up, and I'm not expecting really a discussion about this because we have to check with our lawyer on it. I didn't understand, and I explained to the owner, I don't understand why we can't have a cosigner that's representing this lady in the apartment because all the association is really interested in is a good tenant, okay? A good tenant that respects the rules, and of course, the income. You know, the maintenance income and the special assessment income. I know Gloria, you're ready, but I'm not, you can say anything you want. You're entitled. But I just am throwing this out because, because it was brought up, because it was brought up. I'm very empathetic to seniors or anyone that can't afford something and that can find a way around it where they can afford it, that the association is comfortable with. I think we should entertain it so that this sham transaction that was, you know, shouldn't have been done. I agree 100% with Anne. Anne is 100% right, and Frances is right, too. But it's one of those things that happened because we weren't direct about it. I'm done. Go ahead, Gloria.
I think that what you should all know in the transaction that Jerry is talking about is...
Here's the microphone.
He's correct. Two people wrote in and said that she was going to be a, an occupant not paying rent. One of the owners, the actual owner of rent, lives in New York. You cannot have an occupant if you're not in the apartment. The other owner, the other person who wrote the letter, I'm not going to mention names, is Doug Myers, who, who takes these apartments and all. The bottom line is, what they were doing, because I asked, why does she have to have furniture? She's going in as an occupant. The bottom line is, they were renting her the apartment in Alois. But what they were doing is not letting the board, the committee, anybody. They are doing these flim-flam things all over the village.
Right. Gloria is right, Gloria is right. And I think, I think there could be a way of making everybody happy. Gloria is 100%.
I think that, I think that one of the errors was in interviewing the lady for the simple reason that we, we paid $400,000 out in discrimination.
This is not going to happen in this case. I assure you, I'm talking to the principals. This isn't going to happen.
Jerry, I have empathy and I have sympathy, too. But you are absolutely correct. If nobody will cosign for her, how is she going to pay, if she has no income?
Right, right.
How is she going to pay her electric? Her telephone? Is she going to eat?
Right.
So telling me that she's going in there and, and she's not going to be paying rent to whoever, and the person that supposedly owns the apartment now is running for the board. He bought the apartment from...
Person that owns the apartment is not running for the... Oh, you're talking about...
I'm talking about the...
I see, okay.
He's running for the board when it was, when the, the Marissa, who lives in two...
Well, let's not get her involved.
No, I want to tell you about the story. She has complained for over a year, more than a year, about the, the noise and everything else that's going on in 3M.
Excuse me, Gloria. We're going off subject, we're going off subject. I'm only talking about...
No, we're not going off subject. I just want to say that, that if you have empathy and you have sympathy, that's fine. But you have to know who you're dealing with.
No, we, okay. We need to know about cosigning. That's what I think that we need to, I'd like the committee to look into, and I'd like the lawyer to put his two cents in about cosigning. Is cosigning a valid way of putting someone without the income to support our documents? Is that a valid...
Cosigning is absolutely legal.
No, they co-sign for the tenant. They co-sign for the tenant. They have a tenant. Oh, yeah, right. No, no, it wouldn't be an occupant. That's the whole point. Wouldn't be an occupant anymore. It'd be a tenant. Okay? Or what, this is...
How does cosigning to the tenant guarantee us getting paid for that?
It means that we, it means that we go to the cosigner. Okay? The tenant, the tenant is not responsible to the association.
Should I take it?
The tenant is not responsible to the association for the maintenance and the, and the special assessment.
The principal is responsible. The cosigner is only a backup.
Right. Exactly right. The principal is the owner.
How long did this woman get to link with before we could have...
No, no, this, this, no, no. This woman is not the, is not the party that's responsible in the first place. This woman is a tenant. The one responsible in the first place is the owner.
Okay, okay.
All right, let's move on. Yes?
How does a tenant guarantee him that the owner pays?
Pardon?
How does a cosigner...
He doesn't, no. But if the owner doesn't, if the owner doesn't pay, then the cosigner is in line to pay. All right, look, I just brought it up. I'm almost sorry I did. Let's move along, okay? Okay? Social activities.
I'm sorry, but we still have a motion on the board. Please, sir, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion is, would you please repeat it?
To approve the Sales and Lease report as presented.
Okay, I, I second that motion. Okay?
I'm going to second it, I'm ready.
Oh, okay. And let's go along. Is there any dissension? Okay, it's unanimous. All right? We have our lovely social director, Suzie.
Thank you, good evening. Okay, starting off, decorations look all right for Christmas? December 25th, we have poolside punch and music, okay? As always, every year. December 29th, we have a children's party from 1:30 to 4:30. We have llama clown for one hour, and then we have the movie Horton Ears of Who. I think the kids will all like that. It's brand new this year, so we're going to show that. Okay, and on December 31st, New Year's Eve, we have tossed garden salad, baked chicken. We changed from potatoes to rice beanoff, green beans, cake, champagne toast, party favors, and all the decorations. So I hope you'll all come out. You've already got reservations. January 1st, New Year's Day, our usual brunch, $8 a person, bagels, all different kinds of assorted cream cheese, egg salad, tuna salad, and pool music. So you all come out to brunch, and I think you're going to have a good time. Okay?
What time is the party starting?
11:00. 10:30. 10:30, what's that?
I mean, I'm tired.
Well, maybe we'll have to let you go home an hour early. It's already the signs are on. We'll let you go home an hour early. New Year's Eve. Oh, yes, we need dance hosts for the party. You've got any dancers here? Gentlemen? Oh, I have one back there, but he's going to go somewhere else, I know.
Oh, I'm impressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. All right, we have beautification and landscaping. Can we hear from you folks? Nothing to report? Well, I don't know. It looks like an awful lot to report from what we see. Beautiful work. It really is great entrance to the community. Wow, 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 wow. Okay, whatever we report, we don't have to report. Old business, the Pegasus settlement and allocation of funds. Okay, here we go. We just got a check, and I believe it was deposited, for approximately $940,000. And, ooh, it's a nice feeling. We would like, however, to try to allocate those funds so that we know their use, appropriate use. So this is an opportunity to do that, and I'm going to throw out some ideas, and then we can discuss them. Okay? I'm just using a round number. Well, 940,000 is, is a good number. The part of that money, and Arthur can back me up, sitting there, our former president and treasurer, is $300,000. That really is already a call for to balance the last two budgets. Is that correct, Arthur? He's shaking his head, yes.
You're right.
Okay, good.
By, by the way, to keep the records, it's our financial statement.
Fine.
Our financial statement, or it's the bank.
Good.
The financial statement.
All right, so that's accurate.
...for 2007, 100...
All right, so 940,000 goes down to 640,000. Already, that's what we have to work with. Now, at the meeting that we had with our...
Just to ask you, with the psycho-related, everyone, that 300,000 is to cover the shortfalls, right?
Yes.
And that will go into what?
The operating budget. The operating budget. Correct, Arthur?
Correct.
Okay. All right. We had a meeting with our attorney first, and then with our bank, with ref, with reference to the conversion that never happened in June, the way it was supposed to happen. And the end of discussions, first with the lawyer, and then with the lawyer and the bank, the suggestion that all of, and it was actually, it was a closed board meeting, so there was a quorum. There were, only Paul and I were there, along with Mr. Samuels, Mr. Wolf, and Mr. Fredericks. That was the quorum that was there. And then Mr. Katzman. And the collective judgment led by Mr. Katzman, Mr. Samuels, and myself was that it would be helpful to pay down the 5.4 or 5.6 billion?
Five and a half.
Five and a half, let's say five and a half. It would be wise to pay down that as low as we could afford to so that we, in my mind, so that the payments that we are making, you know, it was an 11-and-a-half-year mortgage. Two years have passed. We have nine-and-a-half years to go. But because we have, we did not convert earlier when we were supposed to convert in June, there is a mismatch of the amortization period that the original loan was figured on and the amortization period that now the bank is proposing to us. Okay? So in order to try to get those two things to dovetail, the feeling was with the board that maybe we should pay down some of the debt before we converted to a mortgage. And the figure that we had tentatively reached was $1 million. The 5.5, we like to bring down to 4.5. And the way we arrived with that is there is already approximately $600,000 in two restricted accounts. One account is money that was collected from sales of properties where the assessments are collected at the sale because it's due from the seller, due from the seller, not the buyer. And that money, the full balance of the assessment, is put into an account. And that's about $300,000. And the other restricted account has to do with the money that was paid, the interest only, that was paid to the bank during this period. But the money that was coming in was not only interest, but principal. It was the assessments that each of us were paying. So the monies coming into the fund was full, principal and interest. The money going out was only interest or the line of credit. So that difference built up to another $300,000 in round numbers. Okay? So I hope I'm being clear. We have $600,000 in funds that are restricted. We really can't do anything else with it. We might have actually, it might have been better to have paid it as we got it. And some members of the board are claiming that other members of the board didn't do what they were supposed to do. But I'm going to, if we want to, not blame, but if we want to state why that was done, and I wasn't around at the time the decision was made, my understanding is that the accountant suggested that. Is that right, Arthur? Arthur corroborates that. That's the reason. We didn't pay, we held it because you heard through some of the board members, Mr. Samuels especially, said that we're at fault because we weren't paying it as it came in, and therefore our interest charges were larger.
Was it in an interest-bearing account?
Arthur, is it in an interest-bearing account? Even if it was, it wouldn't mean much with the interest that's being paid because we were paying based on 7.5%. And if it was an interest-bearing account, it would probably be something like 2%. But was it in an interest-bearing account? I don't know why it wouldn't be an interest-bearing account. Yes, Frances is saying, yes. Yes, you're right. Good addition. Okay? So that's the story. That's where those two accounts come from, that 600,000. Now getting back to the money from Pegasus, we have the $640,000 that we're talking about. Since we wanted to pay it down to $1 million, we need to take 400,000 from that 650... Pardon me? Okay. To make the million, to bring it down to 4.5 million dollars. So now we have, if we do that, and this is just throwing it out, that's what we're going to try to allocate tonight. Okay? We leave, we have $250,000 left that we can use for our needs. And we have, you know, we have certain needs. We have certain immediate needs that should have been done, but we didn't have the money for it, like sidewalk repair that we could be liable for. That's about $20,000, $25,000. And we'd like to talk about allocating that. We have fire alarms that need to be put into condition. You know, that's a must. We have a clubhouse alarm here. When I said fire alarms, you're referring to the buildings where people live. We also have a separate alarm here in the clubhouse. And we actually voted for that, as I recall. And I guess we're looking for the funds to pay for it. Then we also have other items, like construction items of a minor nature, and yet they cause big problems, like downspouts that are not working properly. We have certain balconies that need repair. Even though they're not structurally bad, they're in, they need some work. We have clubhouse roof that you have maybe noticed if you go to the pool, it's starting to, tiles coming off. And we have the indoor pool and jacuzzi. The indoor pool, I understand, one of the motors that heat the pool is not working. And we've had some complaints from people, notably Gloria Gershkov, that the pool is not hot enough for her to do her, her therapy. And the jacuzzi simply is not working. And I heard about that, too, because they're not happy, and rightfully so. So there are items that need to be addressed, and we wanted to open the floor to any other items that need to be addressed with this $250,000. Mr. Pickus, who is, one second, Kirk. Mr. Pickus, who is really the head of our construction committee, and he can talk a little bit about it in more detail, has made us aware that there's about $2 million worth of work over a period of time. You know, not tomorrow, over a period of time, that really needs to be done. And we're just trying to take this money that we happen to have and get started. We also have, that you may or may not be aware of, another claim with Katzman and Garthinkle against Citizens Insurance for wind damage. And we're hopefully, hoping to get, in fact, that's our minimum that we will accept without them having to come back to us for an okay. That's $1 million. Okay? So we're hopeful that that comes to pass. So we have that to look forward to. Okay, that's the sort of groundwork. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I, I would just like to, just to inject my feeling and opinion
Sure.
about the rundown that you gave. For, for my part, what is most important to me is that we provide to the best of our ability with this money stability, moving towards solvency, security, and really definite important use of the money as you've described, you know, in order of priority. So for my part, this, this, this form of allocation, I think would be great. And it puts us a step ahead. It also releases us from many concerns. We can get a good start, a basic start of the most serious things that we need to do. And then if we can bring our energy to the greater case we have before us, which can bring lots and lots of money. So I think, from my part, it's very excellent.
Right, right. Well, we need, that's, that's good. We need specifics. Kirk, if you don't mind, we'd like to have the board first, and then you. So hold, hold, hold back, don't forget. Paul, you have something to add?
You know, I think you have it more to it.
Yeah?
You know, we do have $2 million in repairs that have to be done here.
Right.
My only concern is that we have enough money going forward.
Right. But we don't have $2 million. And you're sat, well, we'll talk about how the allocation is. I just put out the general information. Any other board discussion?
Yeah, I understand that our, I understand that our attorneys had suggested a slightly different allocation. Does anybody care to discuss that? And it's an allocation that our account also agreed with.
Which attorney? You're talking about Katzman?
Yep.
But to my knowledge, I was at those meetings, and I think you're referring to information that was sent to you. You weren't at those meetings. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I believe that there was, one of the meetings was recorded, but the rest of the board is not privileged enough to get copies of the recording.
The recording, the recordings are available to any board member. Any board member can have the recording.
Then you have to explain what they had suggested.
Well, the original discussion, the original discussion,[1699.34] Well, the original discussion, the original discussion, this was the board meeting with the bank, with Mr. Katzman, our attorney, in prison. And it was recorded. Mr. Katzman requested the recording, and Mr. Samuels agreed to the recording. I'm gonna, you know, always believe in recording, so, you know, that was a no-brainer for me. The, the original, the original, or the, the early part of the discussion was, sir, do you have something to say?
Go ahead, I'll...
Okay, excuse us, okay? The, the original part of the discussion, Mr. Samuels, at the last regular board meeting, I'm not sure if it was a regular board meeting or a special meeting, but it was after our meeting with, the first meeting I attended with Wachovia Bank, he requested that the attorney be brought into the negotiations immediately. And the board, Mrs. Gershkov making the motion, and me seconding and seconding it, agreed to let Mr. Samuels get Mr. Katzman involved.
That wasn't the motion.
It was not the motion? What was it, Francis? What was the motion?
The motion was...
Well, let's have our secretary, because she, she was the one that did...
The minister on here, and that's what...
But I made the motion.
Oh, pardon me, okay, I apologize. Linda made the motion, sorry about that.
The first motion that was denied, that Scott made, was that he wanted to have the attorneys look at it and have it go for a delay.
Yes.
That was denied, okay? So I made a motion that we have the bank go ahead of Wachovia, since it's a bird in the hand...
Right.
And present us with the paperwork and have our attorneys review it.
Right.
Not appointing Scott or anyone.
Right.
Have our attorneys review it, because they were present when we first did the Wachovia loan, and they had done some nice things at that time on our behalf. So if anybody, I thought if anybody could do anything with what the bank is offering us now, it would be them.
Right.
Period. That was the motion.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't give Mr. Samuels permission to...
No, we did not.
Okay, and I'm under, yeah. Pardon?
Can I reiterate?
You remember that? All right, I stand corrected, okay? But in any case, Mr. Samuels did get involved with the attorney, and we did get the attorney involved with the bank. And we immediately had a meeting with the attorney in his office, and he informed us, I'm not sure what I can say or can't say. Francis, what can I say? Is it, you know...
He didn't suggest... He made a suggestion that we should park considerable portion of these funds into these two separate banks, or three separate banks. And he would attempt to get financing better than what were being offered by Wachovia.
All right. Were you, were you at that meeting?
I'm paraphrasing what I was told.
Oh, okay. I'm just asking.
Because you did not urge anybody with the recording.
That was not recorded. That meeting was not recorded, okay?
This is what I was informed.
Right, okay.
They collect me, I mean, it was a person.
I, I was there...
I do know that in an email from Howard, our accountant, Mr. Prensio, said he thought that was a very good idea.
To park the money?
Correct.
Right, okay. So it was a question of, with the, with the attorney, the attorney is, and through Mr. Samuels, okay? The attorney is, is trying to get new money to replace the Wachovia money, okay? That was, that was why we were talking, one of the reasons we were talking to him. And the attorney has three possible sources to replace Wachovia, okay?
Okay, are we done there?
No, no, we haven't.
Okay.
Okay, we have not. And I was hoping Mr. Samuels would be here to give us an update since he's started reporting.
Yeah, right.
Well, we have, it's in lawyer's hands, so deadlines can be a little flexible when they're talking to a lawyer, rather than talking just to the principals. But anyway, the, the money, the, some of the money, the lawyer was saying, to entice these potential new lenders, new lenders, banks or whatever, new lenders, to entice them, we should take some of the, take some of the money and give them token deposits. And that's, you know, I don't even think it's important, because the timeframe is so short, but originally, the number, $250,000 to each potential lender was thrown out, and then when we figured the amount of money that was available, it came down to $200,000. And that's my understanding. That particular conversation was not recorded. And I don't think it makes any difference, because as, as Linda is pointing out, the timeframe is very short. Basically, Wachovia expects us to have an answer to them, and the paperwork indicates the answer has to be by the 27th of this month. So I don't really see how enticing a bank with 200 or 250,000 for 10 days has any significance. But I'm just passing on the information as I understood. Anyway, the meeting with the bank the next day was very, was helpful, well, I don't want to get into that, okay? The meeting, the bank, the next day, these numbers came out, and my understanding, and it's recorded, so we have the facts right there, is that we came down to the conclusion that we wanted to pay down, Mr. Samuels agreed, Mr. Katzman proposed, and the rest of the board agreed. And I have, as I say, Mr. Pickus here, who was there. We agreed to look at this, that we need to pay, we need to get the least amount of mortgage that's possible. And that's where we came with a million dollars, and if it's a million dollars and we need to have $600,000 in the two restricted accounts, then 400,000 would be necessary from the Pegasus money. That's my understanding. Paul, do you have any other understanding, or is that accurate? Okay, and we do have a recording of that, so that we can backtrack, and Mr. Samuels and Mr. Wolf and Mr. Fredericks all signed on to it. All right.
I understand you're saying you have a meeting that the attorneys wish to set up again Friday morning?
Yeah, you're not available, I'm not available, and I spoke to, my understanding was it was supposed to be for tomorrow.
Tomorrow, when you were...
Right, that would have been perfect for me, and I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm really not interested.
Can you discuss the same thing?
I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that might have to do with discussing the proposal that Wachovia's put in front of us today, and whatever proposal they have on the three banks that they...
And it's a very, very important...
It is important.
And...
Well, if you're not available, I'm not available.
In fact, I can't change the plans. It's not something that is a win.
Listen, we're paying the lawyers. The lawyers have to make it convenient for us, in my opinion, even if it's Saturday. Lawyers work on Saturdays, okay? So I would like to be there, I'd like you to be there.
Absolutely.
So we're working on that. I sent an email to Howard, telling him it wasn't satisfactory. I'm available on Friday after 3 o'clock, but, you know, we want to have a full board meeting.
I'm available on Friday.
Yeah, period. Okay, well, then that's it. We'll need another day, all right?
So in the meantime, I think we should defer any further discussion until we know what we're going to be doing with the...
Why do you say that?
Defer, I think she's right. Defer any further discussion, I think you should do it.
Until we know exactly what we're doing.
Exactly what we're doing.
No, are you talking about defer what? Defer what?
Any decision on this allocation.
On the allocation of money, perhaps, so it's due to the attorney?
I mean, it's finally discussed it, and brought it out in the open, that's great, but we should take no action on it now, until this other conference with the attorneys, until we know what we're going to do exactly with the Wachovia papers. Because in the meantime, we're operating the money.
Excuse me, are you suggesting that we not put the 300 into operating, wait for the attorney for that?
There's no reason not, there is, there's absolutely no reason not to wait a couple more days to have this conference, to see exactly what we're going to do with Wachovia, or exactly what we're going to do with another bank.
You need to say how they're operating. I don't think that should affect it.
I, I don't see how operating has anything to do with what was allocated in the, I don't know, how ago, everybody agreed to it?
Yeah, I think...
And I think that the 300...
Was that previously agreed on from, from, from Pegasus?
No, nothing with Pegasus.
Not from Pegasus?
This is from Pegasus.
We were talking about, there was no agreement that that money was going to be taken from Pegasus.
Well, then I'd like to make a motion.
My understanding that it was coming, where else was it coming from?
Yeah.
We talked about that, and where else were it going to be coming from? My understanding, it was coming from the seller, from Pegasus, and no other place that we have pending that money's coming in.
Well, then, then it would be reasonable to entertain a motion to have 300, 300,000 transferred to the operating fund and take no, no...